We can wait a couple more minutes to see if Betsy comes. And I'm expecting another resident of the Meadow subdivision to also show up. There's Jim. I guess, Tim, you can operate the meeting tonight if Betsy doesn't come in the next couple of seconds. I will tell you that we won't have a design review commission meeting even though it's on the agenda. Memphis contract packaging did not get back to me to discuss that on Friday like they were going to, so we're just gonna kind of, we'll move that to the next meeting. Unless you would like to just take a look at that design.
We need to have the final, we need to have final information.
Yeah, I don't think we have the information we need right at the moment.
So we'll postpone design review for.
Yes, sir. I guess we'll go ahead with the planning commission meeting then.
Yes, we might as well. Hopefully Betsy will join us, but if she doesn't, we'll just go ahead and file on through it. I don't see Betsy and I don't see Judy, otherwise I think everybody's here, aren't they?
Yes, yeah, we have a, we have a quorum.
Okay. The first item of business is to consider the revised final plat for the Meadow subdivision. Of course, we've been working on that for some time as well as the residents there. And there's been considerable progress in the last six months or so. And Rob, as far as the staff, just tell us what we're looking at here.
So this is the revised final plat of the, I spoke to several members of several property owners in the Meadows. Yesterday, we went around, Stacy and I went door to door. We talked to five of them directly and left letters on the other two property owners that are out there right now. There are only seven houses in this subdivision of 40 houses. So we did speak to them individually yesterday, as many as we could. What, what Mr. Hirsch would like to do, Mr. Hirsch has one hurdle left to finalize this deal with the builder. And his one hurdle left is to add a lot number to where the clubhouse was originally meant to be. So over there, all the way in the upper right-hand corner of the new final plat, there used to be a clubhouse slash pool on that prop, on that, on that property. And it would now be lot 89, which would then make it a buildable lot where they would not have a clubhouse. I think some of the property owners have purchased the property thinking that there was going to be a clubhouse slash pool. I have not been able to find any mechanism in the stuff that I have found to actually build that clubhouse slash pool. I guess that was lit up at the homeowners association at some point. But anyway, what Mr. Hirsch is requesting, to be able to finalize his deal with the builder. And then, so what, and what the, what their deal is with us is to actually, before any construction or any building permits would be issued, actually, they could be one building permit issued in advance of actually paving the road, repairing the road as it sits right now, and then paving it. It's, it's a lot of work, it's expensive. They're not tearing the whole road out, but they are going to take some of the places in the road, especially near the main entrance, and then back there on Charles Circle, where the road is sunken in on top of the sewer lines. They would have to dig that up and start over again, and we're gonna have to look in there and see what's going on with the sewer lines and everything else, probably weren't, they weren't packed correctly at the, at the beginning of all this, and that's why they're sinking. So we're gonna take a look at that. And once we're, we've looked inside and to our satisfaction, to our staff satisfaction, we will, you know, let them fix it and then go ahead and pave it. And if everything goes ahead as planned, Mr. Hirsch says the paving company could be in that subdivision in three to four weeks. So I don't know how long it'll take them to do all that stuff, but three to four weeks sounds pretty good to a lot of people who've been living on a road that is kind of in pretty bad shape. So I think the only hurdle would be, you know, I did, we did speak to as many property owners as possible about this yesterday, would be to get a consensus about renaming that lot 89 from the property owners. And Jim, do you have any, anything to add to that? Jim?
Yeah, sorry, had mute on. No, I think that's a pretty good summary of it. There is a process to go through to amend the plat. And then, of course, there are the covenants that go along with the subdivision that also talk about that, about that lot. So, and then that should all be discussed.
I have a question. You, you mentioned the builder several times?
Yeah.
Is, are you saying that there's one builder who's gonna buy all the available lots?
That's correct. So there are two lots that are not owned by Mr. Hirsch or that realty company. I can't remember the name of the realty company. That was across the street from Mr. Osborne's house. I'm sure he's well familiar with that sign, it's been sitting up there for years. But anyway, those three lots that that company owned were included in this deal with the builder. So the builder is purchasing all lots except two lots that are individually owned. And I know one of those lots is owned by a builder who's now building in Bluff Creek and will be out there to build a home pretty soon after all this deal is done. And I'm not sure who the owner, other owner is. There's one other lot that is not owned by Mr. Hirsch or that other company.
Okay.
So there'll be two lots owned by different people, the rest of them will be sold to the builder. And their plan is, of course, they said they're gonna get it done in a year. I don't know if that's really true or not, but two years is a feasible possibility. So they wanna build out the, the whole subdivision and, you know, of course, they eventually might wanna look at phase two. Who knows how it all is gonna go? So I guess it all depends on the economy and if it holds up. So, right now, yes.
I was gonna say, is there a new performance bond or anything that goes along with this?
No, so there will be a bond on the road after it's paved for repairs. It won't be a major bond, it's gonna be a $25,000 bond, but it will, it should cover any problems we have with the road during construction. We had a similar situation in Hedgerows where the builder wanted to actually pave the road way ahead of time. We, I'm sorry, the developer. So we allowed the developer to pave that road and that we've built 30 or 40 homes in that subdivision. It had basically one problem with the road since, since all that construction was going on. So we really don't think a lot of problems are gonna come up with the road, but, you know, we do have a road. We will have a road bond on there, they still will not be able to get a permit until all that is finalized. So we don't have the road bond yet because the deal with Mr. Hirsch and the builder has not been signed yet. But once all that is executed, Mr. Hirsch will build the road and we will get the road bond for, from the builder. And everything ought to be full steam ahead at that point.
Okay, so you're saying sequentially, they will sign the deal, the lots will go to important homes, they will own them, and then Bob Hirsch will turn in then and pave the roads or fix the roads or whatever. Is that?
Yeah, so they've been working on this deal for, I'm gonna say, seven, eight, nine months maybe. You know, it kind of, you know, some of this, the virus kind of put some of it off, off. The paperwork from the builder kind of put Bob Hirsch back a little bit because there's a lot more paperwork than he anticipated. The builder is a nationwide builder, so they're gonna come in here and build pretty quickly. According to Mr. Hirsch, of course, once, once this is all sold and the road is built, Mr. Hirsch will no longer be involved in this subdivision.
Okay, is he under contract somehow to pave the roads?
They have, they have, they've been working on a deal, a contract to get this done. So that contract is sitting there. They've agreed on every term except for this lot. So if this lot can be approved or renamed as lot 89 rather than the clubhouse slash pool, then it is my understanding that that deal will go through. We will register the plat, the final plat at the, at the courthouse with the number lot 89 on it, and then they will, that deal should go through at that point. And according to Mr. Hirsch, sorry?
Why didn't they not want to do clubhouse?
I don't, the builder does not want to be involved in that, you know, he just wants to build a house there. They build homes, they don't build, they don't build clubhouses. So, and Mr. Hirsch, I would imagine, wants to sell it because he does not want to, once, once the whole deal is done, he wants to be gone. So that, that's my understanding.
And Bob, you said you interviewed multiple subdivision residents. What was their opinion on turning the lot into a house instead of a pool clubhouse type thing?
Right, and I, I wrote a letter, I sent it to, I put it on their door, I gave it to five different people. And to other people, I put the letter, attached it to their door with tape anyway, but explaining this whole situation. I didn't hear any, any issues with it, I don't know any of you people on here that, that I spoke to yesterday, that Stacy and I spoke to. If you had, if you thought about it for 24 hours and you would like to ask them some questions, we'd be more than happy to ask, answer as many questions as we can.
Yeah, yeah, Bob, this is Robert Osborne. I think from our perspective, we don't have a problem with changing that, moving the clubhouse.
I'm sorry, Robert, can you speak up just a little bit?
Yeah, we, we don't have a, we don't have a problem with changing that, with moving the clubhouse. We did, I do have a couple of questions I wanted to ask, and when it's the appropriate time, I'd like to ask later.
Go ahead, you got the floor, Robert.
Okay, thank you. Well, we did, when we moved, when we moved in by our place, we did get a declaration of covenants with the plat, which appears to have been filed with the registered deeds. And, and the question we have is that on there, there is some minimum square foot requirement for any, any new housing. And we just wanted to, one, confirm if the new builder is going to adhere to that, will have to adhere to that covenant.
I would, I would note that the, the covenants, which I read over thoroughly last night, sheets two and three of this plat say that, now, I don't know what they were previous, but at the moment, they say, hang on, I'll get to it real quick. I got it loaded up on my computer already. Here, here's the list, here's page two right here, but I don't know where, did it have a minimum lot size on it? Minimum house size?
Yes, it did.
On ours, for a, a single floor, it was 2,000, and then for a, a, two floors, the bottom floor had to be a minimum of 1,800 square.
It still says that, it is, that is.
No changes, because I did go to the city a couple years back and, or the county, if you will. And I did pull everything that I could find, had there been any amendments or anything else that we were unaware of. And at that time, there were none.
Well, this is item N as in Nancy.
Here it is right here. If you can see over here, if you see my cursor, it's gonna be hard to, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit, maybe you can see it a little better on the screen, everybody should have that on their screen. It tells you right there, a one-story house should be 2,000 square foot minimum, and a two-story home would be 1,800 on the, on the first floor minimum.
Okay, good, good.
So those covenants are really, those covenants, all covenants are enforced by the HOA, not by the town. So I know you have an HOA there, and I've spoken to Mr. Zerba several times over the years. So, you know, you guys would be, the HOA would be the one that would enforce this, these covenants. And right now.
Let me ask a quick question, when they get a building permit, does it, does it have to adhere to these covenants?
So no, we don't have, we don't really enforce the covenants on this, on this thing. We would, we could suggest to the builder that they talk to the homeowners association first before they build a house or get a building permit or start building. You know, to make sure that they don't run into any troubles, that way they avoid any lawsuits or anything that come out of that. And we can easily do that with, with the builder, I'm sure they're used to dealing with covenants, restrictive covenants in subdivisions. You know, they are a big company, so, you know, I don't really know how all that's gonna work, but we'll do the best we can to at least inform them that there are some restrictions on, on house size.
Other things too, there are restrictions on auxiliary buildings, like they can't be metal buildings. Very interesting set of, good, they good set of covenants here.
Right, well, like I said again, that's up to the HOA to work it out with the builder.
See, I think, Mr. Prime, I think where, you know, I was secretary of service for like seven years. I think where it comes in is when the HOA has a vote, basically what it comes down to is Bob Hirsch or designer homes or whoever it was, which now would be important, actually has all the votes. So that, we talk about HOA, we understood the covenants was the developer, pretty much. This is what it was, they will follow them, and I didn't realize the homeowners association had anything to do with it. I thought it was separate, and then the homeowners association kind of, if you will, police the color of the buildings, or if there was an outbuilding, or that kind of thing. So the way it was explained to us originally, and how it's kind of coming around is a little gray.
Yeah, Jim, do you have anything to add to that, Jim? Because.
Sorry, I'm having trouble my mute button tonight. Yeah, so I, I think generally speaking, there, there are two sets of rules here. The first one is the plat, which is enforceable by the city, and the second one is the covenants enforceable by the HOA. Now, what I, what I have seen in the past in other places is that you can actually build a good relationship between the city and the HOA. Because the HOA specifies that there have, there's an architectural review committee that has to sign off on every permit that comes in to make sure that it meets the architectural standards that are in the covenants. Make sure that fences are proper, everything goes through there. What the city could do is, is request that any builder get a letter from the HOA before the city will sign off on a permit to get a letter, at least acknowledging that the HOA has reviewed it before the city reviews it. I mean, that's helpful now. Is that legally binding, I'm not sure, but it's not uncommon for that to happen. Because as, as, as the city goes, I don't think the city wants to be approving a house that doesn't comply with the HOA rules, knowing that it's gonna set up for, for a legal fight, and the burden's gonna be on the HOA to, to, to fight that fight. So I think cooperation there would, would be key, I believe. Just, and, and a lot of times, it might be just, you know, notifying the builder of the rules and the process, you know. No, go to the HOA first, make sure they, their architectural review committee signs off on it, and then we'll review your permit. That's, that's one possibility to how to work that out.
And Jim? We, we had the same issue recently, sorry, George, we had the same issue recently with a, an accessory building that a man built a garage in another subdivision that didn't really meet the covenants. Of course, we did not check on it, he probably should have checked on it with their HOA, but then there was a problem anyway. The man finally did acquiesce and add brick to his accessory building, which brought it into compliance with the covenant. So he avoided, they avoided the legal issues, but there were, there were some tense moments there for that, that man and, and the, well, actually, the developer still, who was still around at this time. So, anyway, you know, we, we probably need to make sure that they do check with their homeowners associations in general before we issue permits.
Jim, to what you were just saying about an approval before a permit, I'm no attorney, but I, I do have a lot of experience with getting plans through design review committees. And I would assume that Memphis does not violate the law in this regard. But they will not issue a permit for certain subdivisions unless they have a stamp that was stamped onto the set, the permit set being presented to them from the design review committee of certain subdivisions. So I, I believe that to be a legal act.
Yeah, no, yeah, I don't disagree, and I think it's probably specified in their code that that's a requirement of a permit application, which doesn't exist in Somerville now, that could be added. But, but I haven't seen it every time where there's a, a legal provision in the code specifying it, and just of sort of a common sense, like, hey, we're not gonna review this permit until you get it through the ACC of the HOA. But I think the process is the same, I mean, it just makes sense. I mean, you don't wanna be approving stuff that knowingly doesn't comply with the, the local rules in the, in the neighborhood.
Well, I think everybody in our subdivision, we've been here since 2008. I think we were actually the second true home buyers. And all we want is the best for the subdivision and for the city. So, you know, if the builders weren't willing to work with us and everybody kind of knows what we're dealing with, I think we're all fine.
Yes, and I think the, you know, the best case scenario for, well, the town and the subdivision is to have a road that you can drive on. To me, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing, and we don't have to deal with huge road bonds with them. They are going to, they've agreed to our terms as far as building in there, as far as the city goes. And they've been working on the legal aspects of that between themselves since then, since about January, I believe it was, or February. So, actually, I think it was March, and I was surprised they showed up to that March meeting because that was the beginning of all this COVID stuff, you know. But anyway, they, they've agreed to it from our end. They've been working on the legal aspects since then, and I think we're at the point now where they're ready to roll. And we would love to have the road paved, and I think you guys would too. And, you know, the clubhouse, you know, would have been nice, I guess, but, you know, having a road and having the houses built and living in a subdivision that's complete and not look like a vacant and everything else would probably be a good thing.
Bob, if I can add something?
Yeah.
20 years ago, when the man that owned that property first started talking about putting it up for sale, 30 acres, this lot that is now being discussed as lot number 89 is where his house stood, and he had a swimming pool there already.
Right, and that, yeah, I did talk to Mr. Hirsch about that house, and I don't know what happened to it, but they had to tear it down because it was.
They filled in the pool and tore down the house, it was more of a cottage than a house.
Like 400 square feet is what it's.
It wasn't big, but.
Is what it says on the thing.
Yeah, but that's the history of that particular lot, it didn't have a number and so forth to start with.
Right, right. I guess he wanted to keep his house there, you know, for posterity or something.
Be able to use the pool.
Yeah, be able to use the pool, yeah.
So, we're in, we're in a workshop, do we, do we?
I actually called the meeting, so this is actual meeting, so we can vote on this tonight if you want, Tim.
Okay.
Because Mr. Hirsch would like to get started as soon as possible on this, so.
Right, is there any more, any more discussion from anybody?
Bob, this is Ronnie Neal. All right, you left word with the property owners, we have at least one property owner here tonight. Have we, have we heard anything from any of the others?
There are three property owners here tonight. Mr. Osborne, Mr. Thorpe, and Mr. Oliver. We spoke directly, I don't know which ones, I know we spoke to Mr. Osborne. I don't think we spoke to Mr. Thorpe. And I didn't see a picture of Mr. Oliver, so I don't know what he looks like, but.
Could we, could we hear from them, what they think about this?
Okay. Mr. Mr. Thorpe, would you like to weigh in on this, or if you're still there?
He's here, but he's muted.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, wrong button. Yeah, no, you talked to me yesterday morning, and I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Oliver?
I'm fine with it too, my biggest concern is them coming in, the values of the homes that they're building and the size of the square footage. That's my biggest worry.
Well, hopefully, we can make sure on our end that they talk to the homeowners association about that first. And get a letter of, from you guys indicating that you're, that you're in agreement with their house plan.
Do you guys have a design review committee in place?
Oh, we have seven houses.
We don't have anything formal.
Well, that, that is something that can be farmed out to design professionals. I know I'm on one in Florida, so if you wanna reach out to me, I can help you set up one if you want to.
Well, you know, usually the developer keeps control for a pretty good bit of time as far as those kinds of things go.
Yeah, but he's supposed to sell all his lots, right?
Well, but.
So the person that buys all those lots then has that. 20, 27 votes, 28 votes. Yeah, it's one vote per lot.
Yeah.
That, that's the concern, yeah.
That is the concern.
Well, I, I hear you, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna give you a, for instance, back when Harbertown was first started, the developer owned every single lot in there. But from day one, there was Tony Bologna and one other architect I'm not remembering right now. And, and the developer who created an architectural review committee. And they, they continued, they reviewed every plan that came through to be built. So just because the builder's gonna have, you know, 27 votes, he has 27 votes to decide who could be on the architectural review committee, you know, that, that sort of thing. But the architectural review committee should be autonomous from the HOA and be under his purview.
Any other discussion tonight?
I, I think we can solve a lot of these issues just by asking them to check with you first, showing them the covenants on the size of the lots, and hopefully they will comply. Which I don't, I don't think they don't, I think they want to comply, so we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, I wanna thank Robert and Dana for being here, Mr. Thorpe and Mr. Oliver, appreciate all the input there. It's always good when you have the residents involved. Bob Turner, how, we, we just ask if anybody votes no, or we just ask for a roll call? call, how do you want to do that?
Yeah, we can ask for a motion in a second, and then a roll call vote if you'd like.
We have a motion?
I move that we approve this plat as presented.
Okay.
I so moved.
George has moved, made the motion, and Richard has seconded it.
Okay, you ready for the roll call?
Go ahead.
All right, Tim?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Betsy?
Aye.
Uh, Richard?
Aye.
Tim, I already did you, didn't I?
Yep.
Sorry, I'm looking down my thing here. George?
Aye.
Who did I miss? Did I miss somebody? Oh, Ron Mayer.
Aye.
Okay. It's a unanimous vote.
And, and Betsy's here now, if she wants to vote?
No, I did vote, and.
I did get Betsy. Yeah, I got her. Yep, so we have six ayes and we have one absent, so it's a unanimous vote.
Okay, well, congratulations on your new plat.
And we'll see how fast this, we'll see if Mr. Hirsch is right, and see how fast he gets going on all this stuff.
Well, I will say for the homeowners, this is Dana Osborne, that.
I know.
Do know that y'all have gone through a lot with this, too, and we truly appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Sure. Let's hope the caboose is on that train.
Yes.
Their lips to God's ears.
So, thank, thank you, folks, you can, you can be adjourned now if you want to on, you know.
Unless you'd like to hang out for the, the, the use, the table uses.
Yeah, the rest of what we do is pretty boring. Unless Betsy objects, I was gonna say, unless Betsy objects, I'm gonna turn the meeting back over to her.
Tim, can, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
My computer keeps staying unstable, so, Tim, if you wouldn't mind to continue it, I'm going in and out all the time. So, if you would keep sharing it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I hate those unstable computers. All right, next item on the agenda is to further review the ordinance that's been, that we've been working on.
So, yeah, let me just walk you through it. What I've done is taken all the stuff we discussed over the last meeting or so and highlighted in yellow, this is just the ordinance. So, I highlighted in yellow, the green highlights are, are language that we could remove from the ordinance, which we discussed that also. So, Section One, repeal Paragraph Four in its entirety and replace it with the following. So, rather than have the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is identified as permissible or by appeal, a permit for any use requiring a variance or special exception shall be adjudicated by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, we just eliminated that one line there because we won't have a lot of appeals due to the special exception portion of the Table of Uses. And then we added the, the term unless otherwise specified in this ordinance. So there is a section that talks about special exceptions, I think, is that right? Yes, sorry, it's been a while since I reviewed this, sorry. So, are there any questions about that section right there that we edited? Hearing none? Anybody trying to get on that can't get on? All right, next one. We added this section, any action taken by the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding special exceptions may be appealed to the Board of Zoning, Board of Mayor and Alderman. Any appeal, I'm sorry, an appeal may be initiated by the applicant, the planning commission, or the Board of Mayor and Alderman, allowing at least, at least thirteen days, but not to exceed thirty days from the action taken. So in other words, they have to wait at least, at least thirteen days, which is the next board meeting from your, from your work, from your, from the second, from the fourth Tuesday of the month, month, and then not to exceed thirty days from the action. So basically, they have to do it at the next board meeting.
That's good.
Okay. Section Three, Paragraph Three was mislabeled as a subparagraph A, so we're just going to relabel that subparagraph A as Paragraph Three. It's just a, an error probably on my part when I, when I printed this thing out, so I'm just gonna fix it. So it's really nothing to do with anything as far as, you know, it's just a paperwork problem. Let's see if I can, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit so I can kind of do this one page at a time. If I, when I get to yellow, something yellow, then I will stop. Okay, I know it's getting small on your telephone.
Microbrewery.
I just need to go from page to page and find the yellow. All right. All right, the definition of microbrewery, which I think we settled on, was an eating place that includes the brewing of beer as an accessory use, and I think we finally acquiesced and talked about twenty-five percent of the floor space. Does anybody have a, anything to say about that? We're basically daring them to put a microbrewery in town, I think, but that's the definition of microbrewery.
Okay.
This is a home business section here where we talked about the use being in the principal building, and we discussed that last time, and I think we decided by vote, by a close vote, to make it only in the principal building. So, added that on there. Beauty parlor limited to one operator, and I changed the language, Tim, I think I hopefully got it right this time, who must be a resident of the home, right?
I think that's what we hit, we're going.
Right, teaching, tutoring, musical instruction, art classes, dance, not to exceed ten individuals, including the instructor, instructors, which we discussed at the last meeting, and that's what we came up with.
Okay.
All right. I added a restriction on the microbrewery brewery, which was subject to Title Eight, Chapter Two, which is alcoholic beverages of the town of Somerville. So they have to adhere to that, to that thing, it's just, just a bookkeeping thing. The definition of special exception under, so this is the actual, like, the preface to the Table of Uses where it explains to you what P means, what PR means, what SE means, and what a blank space means. So, SE equals special exception, and special exception is intended to allow the establishment of those usage which have some special impact or uniqueness such that their effect on the surrounding environment, which cannot be determined in advance of the use being proposed for the particular location. So the special exception provides the town of Somerville with the means to review the location, design, configuration of uses, and potential impact and compatibility with the surrounding area, and then for more information, refer to fourteen-two dash two oh four of this ordinance. So, I think that, I don't know if we're getting close here to the end.
I think that was the last one.
I think it's, the rest of it's Table of Uses.
Yep.
I don't think I, that's it. So, was there anything else anybody wanted to discuss about the proposed ordinance? Speak now, or forever hold your peace.
Dead thing to bed.
So, I guess.
No, we know that's not true.
What's that?
Forever hold your peace.
The good part about an ordinance is it's not a final decision, even though it will go in the books as a decision, we can amend it as we go along if we run into issues. So, like we're doing to our current zoning ordinance. So I guess we need to maybe.
We need a recommendation on that then, Bob?
Yeah, so we make a, make a motion to make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve the ordinance twenty twenty dash oh oh six.
Anybody care to make that motion?
So moved, can I do it?
Yeah.
Judy?
I didn't know you were here, Judy, welcome.
Yeah, I've been here.
Sorry.
I came about five minutes late.
Okay.
All right.
So you didn't take the roll call vote then, did I?
No, but I was nay.
Is it a aye or a nay?
Aye.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, that's Betsy, thank you. Go ahead and make a roll call vote again, Bob, if you would.
Okay, Tim?
Aye.
Uh, Matt?
Aye.
Uh, Betsy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Mayor? Mayor?
He's muted.
Judy, did he say aye?
I did.
Okay, Judy?
Aye.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote. All right, I will, I will add this to the agenda on the next board meeting for additional discussion, I'm sure, and thank you all for, for that. It's a, it was a lot of work, but, you know, I think we did a good job, and we, we're gonna help make a difference to the staff here, working with these, with these uses.
Exactly, we've got something usable now.
I think so, I appreciate it.
Next, Bob, is any other, any other business?
As, as things come up, Bob?
Yes.
If you get any unusual requests, would you bring it back to the planning commission? The, to?
Yes, so.
I mean, they should be revised, right?
Right, so whatever's not on this, whatever's not on the Table of Uses, we'll come back to the planning commission for a vote, to add that use to the Table of Uses. If it's a use that's by special exception, then that will come back to the, to the BZA for a special exception.
Yeah.
And if it's not allowed, if it's a blank, then it won't be allowed in that zone, so.
Well, you know someone's gonna come up with something.
Well, so they.
It's almost like, it's almost like they're gonna, you know.
If they want to put a, if they want to put a factory in a residential area, they have to get it rezoned to, you know, to industrial.
Okay.
Right, so.
That's good.
We're not putting a factory in a, in a residential area more than likely.
Yeah, I was gonna say, good luck on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, just saying, you know, well, you know, in, in reality, though, a factory in some rural residential areas may not be, you know, that offensive, and changing a rural residential area to industrial or whatever, may not be, you know, we'd go through the planning commission, but it might actually go through the planning commission, so depends on location, depends on the use and who it is and all that stuff.
It's a little different than being in a subdivision, though.
But, yeah, well, yeah, that's right, right. It's like putting an amusement park in a strip center, you're probably not gonna put an amusement park in a strip center.
Yeah. Any other business that needs to come before us tonight?
Well, I would like to know what's going on with the Pomada thing, even though we're not considering it tonight, could you explain what's here?
Mandy, you wanna, you wanna update us, Mandy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Am I there?
Yeah, you're here.
All right, so, basically, the Pomada, we, they are just expanding on to, if you were looking directly at it, to the right side of the building. The, that is, has been purchased by the company that purchased Memphis Contract Packaging, and they are looking at adding one hundred and fifty jobs in about three years, and about forty million dollars investment, and that will, that Pomada location with the added or the addition, they will be producing hand sanitizer for Procter and Gamble, and it sounds like Procter and Gamble and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or Bath &amp; Body Works, one of those stores.
Yeah, it's Bath &amp; Body Works, I think.
Yeah, I think that's right. But that's, that's basically what they'll be doing there. I, they were still having some issues with machinery and things like that. I was in contact with the business owner, or, excuse me, one of the top guys today about workforce investment, so they've got, they've got about twenty-five irons in the fire right now, so that's probably why they, you know, didn't show up today or tonight.
So, do we know how much they're adding?
Square footage wise?
This is a hundred by a hundred and eighty square feet, I think, I'm not sure.
That, yeah, I, I don't know the specifics. That sounds about right.
I have another diagram, hang on a second.
Site plan would be helpful.
I have, I have it, sorry, hang on a second, I'll open it.
I don't know that I've seen the whole, all the building so far.
Yeah, let me, I've got it on here somewhere, hang on, okay. All right, you might be able to see that, there it is. It's a hundred and eighty by a hundred and, no, that's not right. Hundred and fifteen by seventy-five is what the addition would be.
No, that's a hundred and fifteen plus sixty-six.
Sixty-five, yes.
Sorry, it's too small for me to read.
That's okay.
And then that's.
Time.
Thirty-six.
Times seventy-five plus thirty-five, one-ten.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's about twenty thousand square feet, nineteen thousand eight hundred square feet, and then I guess that little chunk they'd be taking out of there, too, this little piece right here, so minus whatever that is. So, eighteen thousand.
How many feet to the right, are they gonna expand it?
Say it again, Matt?
How many feet out to the right are they, expand it? I can't see, so.
Hundred and ten feet out into the parking lot.
Wow.
Would that take up the entire parking lot?
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
Yeah. They will have the front parking.
Wait a minute, what, where, what am I looking at here? A-one, where is north, south, east, or west?
North is.
The, the north is at the bottom. The south is at the top.
So the left side, the front side of the building facing the road?
Correct.
So they're gonna add, are those like trucking bays right there, are those windows?
Looks like it, yes. That's gonna be a warehouse, so I would imagine they're gonna have tractor-trailer bays there.
Yeah.
So if you look at the top, it says existing building at the very top, so you know that that's the.
Can you blow that up some, please?
Pardon me?
Blow that up some, please.
Okay.
And they've modified the parking lot out to the south of the building? To the top of this, and they added some type of tractor-trailer housing, something or another, I don't know.
Yes, it's a, it's a tank.
There, that's a pit for alcohol, tank, tank. So if they, if they have a spill, the spill goes into the pit.
Gotcha.
It's required by the EPA or whoever, DEDEC or the EPA, I'm not sure which one.
Is the, the existing at the very top, right?
Yes, right now, yeah, is a blank wall, if you've been over there.
Yeah, so they're adding all this out from that.
Yeah, and it'll then look like this on the side with a skirt, sorry. I'm, I'm in the wrong spot, hang on a second. Oh, I'm in the wrong thing. That'll be a skirt around the bottom, and then it'll be those, those vertical panels, similar to what the O'Reilly's looks like.
Okay.
Yeah, there's the, the trucking bay doors on the right, and where that door high section, the, that little arrow that goes to the left and then goes up to the wall, that's where the offset starts.
I am totally confused.
This is actually the front of the building, looking at it from the road.
This is?
Yes.
So the two bays will be facing Jernigan?
Correct.
Yes.
But they'll be set back, what, sixty-five feet, I believe?
Yeah, whatever that setback was on that, George.
Yes.
Sixty-five feet back, yeah, those bays will be sixty-five feet back.
Oh, so this little part?
This over here is the front of the building, over here, so then the bays come back here like this, so that the tractor-trailer can pull in.
Okay.
So they can be all the way in, and you, all you see the front of the truck, you won't see the whole truck.
So it won't do any blocking on that north side of the building, right?
Yeah.
The trucks will go in around and, okay.
Yeah.
Return again.
So I think they're still trying to decide exactly what they want to do. And I think that's why we didn't get them to, to, uh, come to the meeting tonight. They're, they're working on twenty-five different things, it seems like, Mandy, isn't it?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred, it seems like, depending upon the day.
What, what, uh, what's the zoning of the property this is on? Is it light industrial?
It's general business.
Wow.
So, we, we allow this, uh, use uh, under our zoning ordinance, of the orig, the zoning ordinance we're working under right now, and it would be allowed by special exception under our new zoning ordinance, the same type of use.
Yeah, I'm not so, I'm not so concerned about the use as the appearance.
Yeah.
Well, it, it does have a skirt on it. It's not just, it is a warehouse.
Yeah, but look at that big old blank wall.
Well, that, that blank is gonna be, uh, vertical panels, similar to, uh, O'Reilly's.
Yeah.
Where am I to see this? To see this view right here? Where, am I standing on marginal street looking at this, or where am I?
This is a view from Jernigan. So the Pomada building is over here. And then this would be attached to the existing Pomada building and go all the way across their parking lot. And then go back the length of the, of the, uh, of the Pomada building, to the back.
Okay.
Which I think is basically another Pomada building. When you add it all together, I don't know what exactly how many square feet that, that built, that current building is, but it's probably adding another building right next to it. That'll be basically the same size. Their biggest problem right now is warehouse space, is what they're dealing with. So staging areas and stuff for all this stuff that they're gonna be making.
Bob, how many feet did you say this, the building sits back off of Jernigan?
Well, as far, it's exactly the same, uh, da, distance as the Pomada building. I don't know that off the top of my head. I could probably find out in a second here if you'd like.
Hey, go to, go to Google Maps.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to, uh, Tennessee Property View, I can measure it.
Yeah, there you go.
The current building is thirty-five thousand square feet.
Oh, wow.
All right, so this is half the size of it then. So hang on a second, I'm, I'm working on, uh, I'm gonna tell you the, uh, distance that it will be. So, okay, so if you look at, I'm, I'm looking at the map, Jernigan Drive does not go parallel to the Pomada building, so uh, the further north you go, the closer to the road it'll be. So let me see if I can measure uh, the distance in feet.
It's two hundred feet from the sad wall to marginal street, two hundred and eighteen feet.
Yes, to the Pomada building.
The existing Pomada building.
Existing building to.
So a hundred feet out, Mayor, would be, um, basically the parking lot. Is a hundred feet out, a hundred and six feet out.
Okay.
And it would be parallel to that.
They're going four feet beyond the width of the existing parking lot.
Pardon me?
They're going four feet beyond the existing parking lot.
Right, so it'll basically, yes, it's basically the parking lot, yes. And then, uh, let's see, the back here. So, so it's, it's virtually the same length as the Pomada building itself. I get a hundred and eighty-one feet, so it, it's the same depth as the, uh, Pomada building, is his, existing building. So if you want to go out and look at it before the next meeting, if you go and look at their parking lot, it looks like it goes about to the second parking spot in their parking lot on the north side of that parking lot. Um, and there might be two parking spots there if you, of course, they're gonna put an alcove there, too, so uh, for the, for the trucks. So there'll be a little indentation there.
Can you go back to the site plan?
Am I not on it? Sorry.
All we see is the side of the building.
Oh, sorry.
Do we want to require them to, uh, provide us with a contextual representation, like, like the way I did for, uh, um, Krista Creel's place where you can see how it's gonna look in its environment?
That would be good, George.
Well, if we had a, a, a full site plan with the building and everything, that would help. And then a full front view, that would help.
Yeah, I'm talking about more like a perspective.
Yeah. I could talk to them about it. But they haven't called me back, so there's really no reason to, I, I think, consider this tonight, you know, because they're not really ready. Uh, we just need more information from them.
Right, but it would be good for them to know if we would like something is more than what they're showing us here. I bet they want to know that.
I could talk to them about it.
Hey, one other, uh, quick note on this, that, um, the architectural standards in the zoning ordinance would apply here. So it might be good to be able to go down that list of architectural requirements, talks about the, the building, the facade, the front facade specifically, and make sure they're in compliance with that.
Yeah, because I'm going, right now it doesn't.
And the green area.
But the problem is, it can, the addition would be similar to the existing building.
I thought there was a lot of glass on the front of the existing building.
Yeah, on the side, though, there's nothing. It's a, it's a concrete block wall.
Well, it is basically in the front, too.
Yeah, it's a solid concrete block wall on the side.
It's just that bit right there in the.
Yeah.
Only glass is right there in that entrance, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's not, there's, you know, that, that building did not win any architectural award.
Well, and the problem is, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna consider the surrounding area, there's nothing around that area that's gonna win any architectural awards. The back of all of that strip center that's up there is pretty rough when you cross the street, across Jernigan, you know, and
That was not.
The surrounding area, uh, you know, the, the restaurant is falling down around itself.
Yeah, that was not my point. But Bob, that wasn't my point about the contextual, what I, my point.
Yeah, I know. I got you. You want to see what it looks like with the building.
Yeah, it, it's hard to conceptualize from a two-D drawing.
Okay, I will see what I can do about that.
I think the, uh, the point is, with the zoning code saying what it does is you have some discretion here. Because typically, this would be a chance, if, if you look at this building as being non-conforming in, in the architectural standards, and when they put an addition on, this would be your chance to make it comply with the architectural standards.
Yeah.
But they are pretty flexible, um, so, and it does talk a lot about the context, you know, what's, what's around it, you know, it should match, match the scale and massing and feel and architecture of what's around it. As you pointed out, there's really nothing around it, uh, to guide on. But it does talk about, you know, you, you should avoid blank walls on the front facade, which is what this is, but it's a warehouse. So I think, I think you have the discretion to, to bring this up as far as you want to, within reason, of course, or sort of leave it as the warehouse look, um, that it is. But I think either way it's justified. But I, I do think you wanted to address the, the standards in the zoning code for architectural and, and, and make a, make a point to either say, well, we, we can live without this as long as we have this one here. But making, making sure that the approval matches the, the code, I think would be helpful, just so it's not arbitrary.
I'm wondering why, maybe George, you can help me with this. I'm, I'm looking, uh, um, Tennessee property data, and wondering why they didn't do the addition on the south side where there's more.
Well, I lost you, Betsy, I don't know.
Uh, shoot. Um, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Yeah, I can hear you. I'll translate for you.
Okay. I just, there's, it looks like there's equal room on either side of the building. And had they put the addition on the south side instead of the north side, it's further back from Jernigan with more potential, the landscape or.
Okay, so they, uh, so what she's saying, they could have put it on the south side, but that's where their pits are for the,
Okay.
the trailers. So they actually have, if you drive by there, you'll see the pit, and there are actually three tankers already in that pit.
Okay.
With that, that have alcohol in them that they loaded into the building.
That makes sense.
So, yeah, that, they, they can't, uh, they didn't think about, I guess they didn't think about putting this in there at that time.
Well, which would you, would you rather see, three tanker trucks sitting there or a building? Because then they had to put the, the tanker trucks on the, on this side, man, so.
Well, I think either way, I think, uh, you know, just looking at the side of the building, um, I hate to say this, but a lot, almost anything is an improvement over what's there right now, because it's pretty blank.
Yeah.
Uh, this, this is gonna sound weird, but I prefer a blank concrete block wall to a blank, um, seriously, to a blank of metal siding wall.
I got you.
Um, y'all, y'all saw what happened to Fayette County Fire Department, right?
No.
Didn't take long to get through that wall, did it?
No, it didn't.
Yeah.
It looks very, um, very cheap, unsteady.
Well.
Well, and if they put greenery around there, it helps it. You know, that long blank wall with some greenery. We would require that, right?
We could.
Yeah.
Certain amount of.
Yeah, you're right. I, I think we should require some, maybe some cedars or something, something that's evergreen.
Yeah.
That wall cries out for a mural, too.
Yeah.
Maybe so.
With our luck.
Welcome Procter and Gamble, Matt, how about that?
Hand sanitizer.
How about welcome Procter and Gamble to Summerville?
You know, that, that's not a bad idea, like.
That isn't a bad idea.
That wall that is going to join the front of the existing Pomada building, if they could just set that back like three or four feet from the corner, it could identify as a separate panel, and you could do some really interesting stuff with that. Might be something, might be an idea to pitch to them.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see what happens.
Anything else? Any other, any other discussion or comment about the Pomada? We'll wait to hear more from them then with some, some, uh, additional con, concepts, uh, and, uh, take it up at a later date then. Uh, o, other business, any other new business? I ha, I have one question, I guess I was gonna ask, which was that we still have a proposed zoning change sign up here on Highway sixty-four, uh, next to the car dealership, you know?
That was approved last night at the board meeting, so we haven't taken it down yet, but we will, we'll take it down.
Okay, so it, it has been approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So.
Any other business to come before this group tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all later.
Hey, Mayor, you standing there? I have a couple of things, uh, I need you to sign, maybe in the morning or something, before you leave. Uh, I've got a.
In the morning before I leave? You know what time I leave?
Six. I don't know, what time do you leave?
Late.
Oh.
What do you need? Where you going?
I, I, I just have, uh, I have that one resolution that I forgot to give you last night, that's for the matching funds for that grant that we're going for. For the, uh, for the fifteen, a hundred dollar safety grant.
I will get it signed.
Okay. Thank you.
See y'all.
Bye.
Bye.